Sorry. Good evening and welcome to the December 1 reorganizational meeting for the county commissioners. Andy Lucas, county manager, acting a temporary chairman until the board nominates a chairman, and then the board will go through their organizational meeting agenda, and then they'll move on to their regular agenda for December 1. I'm going to open up the floor to nominations for chairman. So, any nominations?
Mr. Manager, I would nominate for chairman Scott Efer.
A nomination for Scott Efer. Any other nominations for chairman? Hearing none, I will close the nominations and ask for all those in favor of Scott Efer as chairman to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Congratulations, Commissioner Efer, on being chairman, and I will step aside so you can conduct the rest of the meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, County Manager Lucas. I certainly appreciate that, and board, thank you so much for your confidence. At this time, we will open up the nominations for vice chair. Anyone have a nomination for vice chair?
I'll nominate Bill Lawhan for vice chair.
All right, I have a nomination for Commissioner Lawhan. Any more? All right, hearing none. I move the nominations to be closed. All right, at this time, all in favor for Bill Lawhan as vice chairman, please say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations, Commissioner Lawhan. Before we go any further, I would like to say thank you to Chairman Barbie and Vice Chairman King for all your service this year to our board. I know it's, in some ways, it's been challenging, but I certainly appreciate y'all's service. Thank you so much. All right, at this time, we have our approval for bonds. I need a motion to approve the renewal of the following public bonds, official bonds. Finance Officer Toby Henson would be $1 million, expiration date June 9 of 2026. Register of Deeds Jenny Helms, $50,000, expiration date November 20 of 2026. Tax Administrator Clinton Swearingen, $100,000, expiration date October 28 of 2026. And Sheriff Jeff Crisco, $5,000, expiration date December 3 of 2026.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that the bonds you just read out are approved.
All right, I have a motion from Vice Chairman Lawhan. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Crump. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. All right, at this time, after speaking with everyone, I have a slate of commissioners for our boards. There's 11 boards, and I'll just run down the list. Economic Development Commission, Randy King and Bill Lawhan. Consolidation Health and Human Services, Patty Crump, Trent Hatley, a member of the Library Trustee Board, myself. Airport Authority, Brandon King, Trent Hatley. Chairman of the Fire District Commission, Billy Mills. Member of the Senior Service Board, Bill Lawhan. The member of the Rural Planning Organization, Patty Crump. Alternate of the Rural Planning Organization, Billy Mills. Member of the Stanley County Water and Sewer Authority, Trent Hatley. Alternate Stanley County Water and Sewer Authority, Mike Barbie. Member of the Central Island Council of Government, myself. Alternate Central Island Council of Government, Mike Barbie. Partners Behavioral Health Board, myself. And Juvenile Crime Prevention, JCPC, Billy Mills. All right, Commissioner King, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Lawhan. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you very much. Pass the Samo. Tyler, could you make sure that these committees, that they get their email addresses so we'll know when they meet and stuff? All right, thank you. Next item we have is establish meeting dates for 2026. I think you guys all have a copy of that, but I'll be happy to read it off for you if you'd like. There's a couple that rescheduled due to Martin Luther King holiday, January 19, and rescheduled due to the Labor Day holiday, Monday, September 7. Entertain a motion to accept those dates unless there's any corrections. Commissioner Crump, have a motion by Commissioner Crump?
Second.
Commissioner Billy Mills, second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries. One announcement I do need to make is during our regular meetings of the board, the county commissioners, in order to act in their capacity as board of governors for the Greater Baden Water and Sewer District or for the Pining Point Water District, may be in discretion a recess commissioner, regular meeting, and reconvene as the Board of Governors of either these above two entities in order to gut the business matter related to that entity. All right. I think we're through with the business part of it right now, so I would call the December 1, 2025 meeting to order. Welcome, everyone that came out today. Thank you so much. And at this time, we'll have the invocation and the pledge, so if y'all would bow for prayer. Our grace heavenly Father, we humbly come to you at night, once again thanking you so much for the many blessings, Lord, as we exit out of the Thanksgiving holiday, which we are so thankful for, and as we enter the Christmas season, Lord, we just pray that we'll just focus on you and focus on your will and what needs to be done. And, Lord, thank you so much for this board. I pray for strength and wisdom as we conduct business and make decisions for Stanley County. Again, Lord, I pray for our police, our fire, our EMS that protect and serve us daily. I pray for our military and their families for the ultra sacrifices that they make. These things we ask in your precious name that we pray. Amen. If y'all would stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Somebody could kill that heat. Be pulling off coat here in a minute. All right, at this time, y'all should have a copy of the agenda. I would seek approval or any adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner King. Second by Commissioner Hatley. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, Samo. Public comment, I don't think we had anyone that signed up for public comment. If anyone's out there that would like to speak, I see Ms. Bennett smiling. I miss that smile. All right, at this time, we'll move on to our scheduled agenda items. Item A is a public hearing from Economic Development Incentive Grant, and our presenter is Ms. Elizabeth Katmier, EDC Director. Long time, no see, Elizabeth.
It's almost like we just spent two hours together. So, good evening, Mr. New Chairman Eferd and members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to come before you tonight on behalf of the Economic Development Commission to request support for a property tax-based business development grant of 75% for eight years for a business that is expanding its operations in the city of Albemarle with a second nonwoven line. The project will create approximately 13 additional new jobs with salaries above the county average and will result in new taxable investment of at least $9,58,175 in machinery and equipment over the next eight years. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about the project, and I appreciate your consideration of this grant request.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Any questions for EDC Director?
Elizabeth, I was, I know some of the people had some questions. On that $9 million investment, now that's just for new facilities and personnel. It's not for proper property acquisition?
No, no property acquisition, and that is, the investment is exclusively for new machinery and equipment.
Now, this is something I was just curious about. Do the salaries, the 13 people, does that go into that figure of, you know?
Their salaries do not go into that figure. Their salaries are projected to be at $45,000 per year, and the county average currently as of 2025 is $41,313. So, they do meet our threshold for needing to be above the county average.
I was wondering also, when you do this, who verifies or monitors that there's actually $9 million being spent on the, I'm not trying to turn, I'm just, it's just a question.
Sure, these are great questions, great questions.
Okay, you've got $9 million proposed. Now, how, who verifies that?
So, the $9 million is over a certain amount of years, so they have a ramp-up schedule.
Five years.
Yes, over, they have a ramp-up schedule that we agree to in their performance agreement. We monitor that in our office and verify it with tax records from Clinton's office as well as-
That's per year?
Per year, as well as with the state of North Carolina. And reminder, this is a performance grant, so that if they do not meet all of their required performance metrics, they do not receive the grant.
You have any idea on what they pay in taxes now?
I would have to go run some numbers for that. Off the top of my head, no, I do not.
Yeah, the problem is just got to look at both, right, you get the real property, and then you got all the business personal property listed separately.
Elizabeth, are all the jobs above county average?
Yes, sir.
They are?
Off, excuse me, all 13 of them are at the same salary, which is $22 per hour, which comes out to approximately $45,000 per year.
I thought one time they might be lower. Again, I'm not trying to sink your ship. What if those 13 new jobs live somewhere else outside of the county?
The business is located in the county. There's no way for us to track where their employees live unless they were to provide that to us, which we don't ask for.
I just want to make sure, again, so you have $100,000 in property tax. 75% Economic Development Grant would mean that out of that $100,000, that we would forgive or have a reprieve for $75,000.
Yes, as an, for example purposes, yes, but only if they meet their perform, 100% of their performance goals. So, only if they meet all 13 jobs and all $9 million.
Per year.
In total. Now, they have a ramp-up schedule, so that would not be $9 million the first year, according to their project summary sheet.
Yeah, 13 jobs per five years, so that's about two and a half jobs per year.
And yes, we do have a, we'll have a schedule with them that'll be outlined in their legal performance agreement that they would meet. So, for example purposes, if they meet 100% of those goals, we would reimburse that 75% for eight years. Now, after those eight years, we receive all 100% of those.
Tell me again, who monitors that?
My office does, as well verifying with county administration and the tax office as well.
Thank you.
And they would pay those taxes upfront, then we would reimburse?
Yes, they pay 100% upfront, and if they meet their goals, we reimburse that percentage.
All right. Any other questions? All right, at this time, we need to hold a public hearing. I will declare the public hearing open. Anyone here speak for or against the proposed incentives? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the Economic Development Incentive, 75%, be granted.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Lawhan. Second by Commissioner Hatley. Any discussion?
Five years.
Five years.
For eight years.
Eight years, I'm sorry, eight years. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, Samo. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
All right, next item is public hearing for fiscal year 2027, Community Transportation Program Application. And I see my presenter is Steve Dutton, but I don't see Steve, so is that you, Commissioner?
Pitch hit. Wasn't anticipating pitch hitting, but we'll, I will pinch it.
All right, we'll call in the-
So, this public hearing is for their state DOT grant funding for the '26-'27 fiscal year. And so, and this is typical. They, we normally do this in the fall of the preceding fiscal year for our SCUSA, and this is for their capital funding. They have a request for a local share of 60,000 with a total request of 464,000. So, 15% of the administrative and then 10% of the capital. And so, and I think a lot of folks sometimes think, well, gosh, we have a lot of buses out there, you know, but 90% of that capital cost is borne by the state and the federal government. And then, a huge, 85% of the administrative function is on the state and the federal government. And so, there really isn't a whole lot of local dollars in SCUSA. It's mainly state and federal money that funds SCUSA. And so, you'll need to hold a public hearing this evening for these Section 5311, 5310 grants that are, and that's been publicized. That publication is actually in your packet. And so, you'll do the public hearing for those this evening, and then if there's any, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have prior to the public hearing.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for County Manager Lucas? All right, hearing none, I will declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak for or against 5311 or 5310? All right, hearing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the proposed Stanley County Community Transportation Program application to be submitted to the North Carolina Department of Transportation.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner King. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Mills. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, Samo. All right, next item is Board of Equalization and Review Appointments, and our presenter is Mr. Clinton Swearingen, Tax Administrator. No postcards this time, sir?
Not yet. Not yet. To answer your question from earlier, I was doing the numbers. They pay about $150,000 a year in taxes currently. That's city of Albemarle and Stanley County total. That's for real and personal property. So, I'm here tonight for the Board of ENR appointments. In your packet, you'll see that the current Board of ENR members are Hazel D. Efer Jr., James F. Starnes, Garrett Allen, Amanda Cody, and Michael P. Hatley. Three of those five members' terms expires December 31 of this year, so we need some appointments made to fill their terms. H. D. Efer Jr. and Jim Starnes have both served for eight years consecutively, so they cannot be reappointed by statute. They have to come off for at least a two-year timeframe. Garrett Allen is the current vice chairman of that Board of ENR, and he is available for reappointment, and he did submit an application and said he was willing to serve again. Mr. Allen has never missed a meeting. He's been at every meeting we've had the last four years, so he's been a good member of that board. The other applicants that's in your packets are Shawana Long, who is a school teacher in Montgomery County, Cody Smith, who is a banker at Uori Bank, and lastly, Larry McGuire, who runs his own real estate firm in Stanley County. So, I would ask the board to please appoint three of those four individuals to fill these terms that are expiring. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Clinton. Any questions for Clinton?
Clinton, if the year reprieve, is that state or what?
That's, that's state law. They can't serve more than eight years consecutively, and because it's three and two staggered, you've got at least two years before somebody else is coming off. I guess technically if Amanda or Mike Hatley resigned within a year, then they could go back on after a year.
How often do they meet, Clinton?
They meet at least once every year by statute. They have to. But usually, it's two times in the spring, once my staff has gone out and done all the construction, new building permits and all that stuff. And we mail out notices, and then if people have problems with their values, then that's when they would go to this board to hear those appeals. So, two times, usually two times a year. Revaluation years are completely different. There's more appeals. So, this past year, I think they met seven times. But I would say two times a year minimum, but then, once bills goes out and business personal property can be appealed, I have had to reconvene the board in September, October, to hear those appeals. Or, you never know what kind of motor vehicle appeal may come up. I mean, that's monthly. We usually can work that out, but it does happen.
What's to pay?
$25 an hour.
You keep those meetings short, don't you?
We try to get out of there as fast as we can. They want to get out of there fast, too, so.
Any other questions for Clinton?
I just want to make sure, so if you appraise my property-
Yes.
-and I disagree, and then I come to you-
Yep.
-and then I disagree again-
Correct.
-then I go to this-
This board, yep. It's the next level before you go to the state level at Raleigh.
How many appeals would you consider you have during a revale year?
During this 2025 revale, we had almost 1,800 informal, where they came and talked to me or my staff, and then 730-something went to ENR. So, about half of those went to ENR.
I mean, it went to Raleigh?
We ended up having 14,500 go to Raleigh.
All right, any more questions?
I know. All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint, reappoint Garrett Allen, Larry McGuire, and Cody Smith to the Board of ENR.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Crump for Mr. Allen, Mr. McGuire, and Mr. Smith. I have a second by Commissioner Hatley. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of those appointments say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you, board.
I'm getting to your part here, Pamela. No, just trying to find it on the agenda here. I got to go through all these things to get to it. All right, our next item is Senior Services Advisory Board Appointments, and our presenter is Ms. Pamela Sullivan, Senior Services Director.
Thank you, Chairman Eferd, and fellow commissioners for allowing me to be here and present tonight for the Senior Services Advisory Board. The senior services is seeking to fill three vacancies on the advisory board. These vacancies come from, if you, in front in your packet, you have the board members along with the applications, and you can see Ms. Dolores Chambers passed away, and Barbara Ledbetter is resigning from the board due to health conditions, and Brenda Spencer has exceeded her term. She has served two terms. So, we are looking for three vacancies to be filled, and the board has met, and they are recommending Polly Martin out of those applications, as well as Ava Plot and Roland Thomas. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Pamela. Any questions for Ms. Sullivan? All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request approval of appointment to Polly Martin, Ava Plot, and Roland Thomas for a three-year term starting January 1, 2026, ending December 31, 2028.
All right, thank you, Vice Chairman Lawhan. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Crump. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, Samo. Thank you, Pamela. You can turn that thermostat down if you want to when you pass him by. Thank you. All right, our next item is NC DOT Secretary Road Adoption Resolution. Our presenter is Bailey Klein, Planning Director.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having me. This is a little different than what I normally have before you. This is a resolution for NC DOT. They have requested that there be an update to the previously adopted resolution for secondary roads. The previous one that they have on file was from 2001. This allows for the adoption of secondary roads by the NC DOT. This resolution indicates that once there's a petition filed for a secondary road to be adopted, all the approvals and inspections of these roads will be performed by the NC DOT office. This resolution will not change the current procedure that is followed by NC DOT. It will allow for their office to continue out with their required inspections and investigations in order to allow for these roads to be added to their database. As there are no county maintained roads, the DOT is seen as one of the many resources for the county to ensure public safety. DOT has indicated that this resolution is a policy that is set in place by the state and is valued as a sign of local support. I communicated back and forth with the DOT. They had sent this over for it to be updated, for the resolution to be updated. They indicated that the policy isn't development-specific. It's just an overall for all secondary roads that are requested to be added to their database. If there is a resolution that's needed for a specific development, for instance, a major subdivision comes through, and they are requesting that that subdivision has a specific resolution adopted for its roads, then they will request that and ask for that. Since I've been here, I've never seen one asked for, but that's not to say it will not happen. They, there is no set timeframe for the adoption of these. Obviously, the last one was 2001, so it's been a little bit. But they did say that other counties do have set timeframes, but they will let us know when another one is needed, at the time that a new resolution is needed to be adopted. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have about this, otherwise.
All right, thank you, Bailey. Any questions for Bailey?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Does this make it easier for developers to get their roads taken over by the county?
I wouldn't necessarily say it's easier for them. It's just, so for instance, a major subdivision comes through, they ask for approval from the planning board, planning board grants approval. At that time, the improvements have to be done before the plat sign. One of the improvements is the roads. So, since there are no county maintained roads, and I'm no expert engineer to go out and say that they meet state standards, DOT does that for us because they are state maintained roads. So, really, it's, you know, more beneficial for them to do it than for our office because they want them to take over those roads. Yeah, it's just another threshold.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board? Alright, hearing done, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the resolution as printed.
Thank Commissioner King. I have a motion by Commissioner King. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Trump. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. A mo. Thank you, Bailey.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is Strategic Planning Retreat, and our presenter is County Manager Andy Lucas. I can't believe it's that time again.
Comes around quickly.
It does.
And I may kick myself in the butt, but I'd ask, I would, I wanted to ask you, um, to just, I wanted to digress just a second on the tax question that was asked earlier. Um, just so I'd make sure everyone's, it's transparent, it's clear. Um, that hundred and fifty thousand dollars that a company would pay today, uh, in taxes, they'll continue to pay that. That, that, that's not going to change. They're not going to get a grant on what they currently have on the ground that's been invested. That, that tax incentive is only to induce new investment. And so that incentive on nine million, which would be roughly forty-five thousand, almost forty-six thousand in taxes, they would get seventy-five percent granted back on that if they meet all the stipulations of that performance agreement. And so.
If something happens to that, say the deal falls through, the owners of that building still continue to pay the taxes.
That's correct. And they'll continue to pay the taxes hundred percent fully on what's there today. That doesn't, that won't, the grant doesn't change that at all. It's just on any new investment that's made above the baseline of today. So I just want to make sure everyone's clear on that, and I, um, wanted to digress, but I'm sorry. Just feel like we need to make sure it's transparent, so, um. This item, uh, before you this evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, is to, um, ask the board to hold a one-day planning retreat. Um, they've been effective in the past to help us sort of kick off our whole budget, uh, cycle, um, help the board set priorities, uh, for next fiscal year and beyond. Um, some potential dates, we've typically done them in February, maybe early March, but we put forth four Fridays in, uh, February, uh, for your consideration. And we would just, uh, the requested action would be to consider approving, um, that the, the, the retreat and be facilitated by, uh, Centralina as it has been in the last few years, and then just that, that date, whichever date you, do you, um, so choose.
Okay. Everyone had a chance to look at their calendars and. Thirteenth? You can get your Valentine shopping done while you're, while you're out.
It's a Friday the thirteenth, oh, but.
Oh, man, yeah, Friday the thirteenth, oh, yeah. That could be a little tricky. Alright, what about the sixth? What about the sixth, Billy? Well, I mean, we can look at the twentieth. We'll, we'll feed you if that helps.
We'll feed you breakfast and lunch, and a snack in the afternoon.
Just gonna be at airport.
That's likely where we'll have it again, yes.
Alright, so it's looking like February the sixth? Is that good? February the sixth at eight o'clock?
Yeah, we'll probably start at nine. We'll have, um, continental breakfast available starting at eight-thirty.
Okay. Alright, February the sixth is our strategic planning. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next item, uh, as soon as I get to it, will be the, uh, reaffirmation of our Code of Ethics, and again, our presenter's County Manager Lucas.
Yes, sir, and this is, uh, to comply with North Carolina General Statute, it's one sixty-eight, eighty-six, and just a reaffirmation of your, um, Code of Ethics each year. Um, tip- typically try to align it with your organizational meeting, just so, um, we don't forget it. Um, and so, to do it annually, and so, that's before you this evening. No changes, no changes have been made to it since the initial one that was adopted several years ago.
Alright, thank you, sir. Any questions for County Manager Lucas? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Code of Ethics as written. Commissioner King, thank you for the motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Vice Chairman Lawhan. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. The next item we have is Consent Agenda. Questions, concerns on the consent agenda? Hearing done, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
Alright, I have a motion, um, by Vice Chairman Lawhan, seconded by Commissioner Barbie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. A mo. Alright, at this time, the board comments, announcements, and committee reports. Um, I'll start with, uh, Mr. King. Thank you, Mr. King. Ms. Trump? Mr. Hatley? Mr. Barbie? Y'all are quiet.
I'll say a little bit, then. I congratulate, uh, Mr. Eferd on being the chair. It has been an up and down year. I appreciate everybody backing me up on it, and, uh, look forward to, uh, serving out the rest of the term.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mills?
No comment.
Vice Chairman Lawhan?
I want to recognize, uh, Commissioner Barbie and Commissioner King for serving as chair and vice chair. Uh, thank you for that extra bit of service, and, uh, I want to, I don't think we have another meeting this month, do we? So I'm gonna wish everybody a Merry Christmas, all of our citizens. We've got a great county with a lot of great people that live here. Hope everybody has Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Lawhan. Um, don't forget, this Friday is the county employee luncheon. Starts at eleven-thirty, I believe. Um, so, hope everyone can be out there, and again, I, I want to thank, um, Chairman Barbie and Vice Chairman King for their service to the board, and, and thank everyone for their service to the board. As I was going through all the appointments and looking at them, you know, um, we do more than meet once a month or twice a month. There's a lot of commitments and, that we do, and I certainly appreciate everyone's commitment. Uh, if you can't make one of your commitments to a board appointment, if you don't have an alternate, if you would give us a call, uh, we would certainly be happy to fill in. Again, um, hope everyone out there had a great Thanksgiving. Uh, I'd like to wish everyone, um, a Merry Christmas, and I can't believe I'm saying Happy New Year, twenty-twenty-six. Uh, this, this year has flown by, and I wish you and your best to your families during this holiday season, and let us not forget the why we celebrate this season. With that being said, um, again, uh, thank you for coming tonight, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Barbie, seconded by Commissioner Trump. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank y'all.